A manatee? Punch him in the face? No, you need to see him. Nice guy, he really is. You gotta know him. He's a pretty nice guy.
Surrounded by...
Yeah. You should meet him, he's a nice guy. Meet him eventually, he's a nice guy.
That's usually not like him. Unless he changed.
I don't know, I mean, one season can do that.
They had a good season last year.
Are you ready? All right, now you can stop talking. We're gonna call to order the August 7th regular meeting of the Woodland Park City Council. If we can have a roll call, please.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Here.
Gary Rovetto?
Here.
Bob Carlson?
Here.
Ken Matthews?
Here.
Noel Sawyer?
Here.
John Schaefer. Join me in the pledge to allegiance, or pledgeable allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. What a crowd. This is great. We have a couple of folks in the audience we're gonna recognize as visitors, and we've got our county commissioner, Mark Detton Reader. Mark, did I pronounce it correctly?
Pretty darn close, Mayor Pro Tim. Detton Reader.
Detton Reader, thanks, Mark. Glad to see you here.
Thank you.
And although on our agenda for ceremonies, presentations, and appointments, we have none, we're gonna add something to that agenda, and we're gonna ask Vera if you could come on up and tell us a little bit about Main Street and the good news in that arena. You could, just for the record, enter your name and address.
Super. My name is Vera Egbert. I'm branch manager of People's Bank here in town, and my address is 250 Lower Lane. I am the standing chairperson for the Main Street Steering Committee, and I'm here to announce that Woodland Park has received Main Street candidacy. So it's wonderful news. We've had a lot of people working very hard. We're very excited to now be able to get down to business and do wonderful things for the city of Woodland Park, especially our downtown Main Street area. We hope to get started, we'll meet again on Wednesday, the 27th. It's not our normal meeting time, it's Tuesdays, every other Tuesday, but we, for some scheduling reasons, we're gonna be meeting Wednesday, the 27th. Anybody that would like to join us, we would welcome that. We will be formalizing our board and starting to flesh out our committees so that we can get down to business. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Well, first, a round of applause. This is good news. Can you tell us about the committee, so some of the folks here can get an idea of what they can join in on?
Well, let's see, we've got organization. The hot one that seems to be, a lot of people want to be on, is historical preservation and design. A lot of folks have a lot of vision around that. We've got the economic development, and then also...
Promotion.
Marketing.
Marketing.
Yeah, so the planning events and trying to do those kinds of things.
Vera, thanks.
All right.
Of course.
Of course, I like to add something to that. You know, this was a work in private, I think we've been doing this for about a year and a half. We first made the, you know, initial product before the Historical Preservation Committee two years ago, essentially. From there, it evolved, and we're looking for people that would come onboard, to form a board, to make this Main Street program a possibility for us. And fortunately for us, we got the right people. Let me just mention a couple of names. Vera, of course, our chairman. Gary Crane, basically co-chairman, basically, but vice chairman. Angela Dingwell, Lee Willoughby, Laurie Gloth, Steve Jarzlo, Jan Wilson, she was Jan Comer before, but she just got married. Deb Miller and Brian Fleer. These people put this committee together, this is the standing committee, this was the board, that kinda put all of the materials we needed to get together to make this possible. And there was a lot of stuff. The document that we took up there in person, we mentioned to you last week, about like that thick, so it had a lot of stuff in here. Many of you may have known that we had that assessment, many of you participated in the assessment, that was part of the package. So, this board of directors was just amazing, and I kinda indicated to you all that, there are two boards, one for the main, one for the creative boards, and I said, these are not shrinking violets. These people are really, you know, in themselves, very accomplished individuals. So I'm really proud of you, Vera and the group, that put this together, made this possible. I think this is gonna really put us on the map big time. I think it's gonna make it possible for residents of Woodland Park to, you know, have an opportunity to enhance their quality of life, and as we develop our downtown district. So, congratulations, it's really great.
Thank you very much. Congrats to all. Another signature event that we'd like to have Ben Caperton come up and talk to us about, Vino and Notes. Oh, he's bearing gifts, great. We asked if there was wine in there, but evidently not, but it's okay.
Okay, Ben Caperton. I am a, live at 1143 Windfire Lane, Woodland Park, I've been here for an astounding 14 years, and I love every minute of it. I came here tonight to say thank you to the city of Woodland Park. We decided to move Vino and Notes, our seventh year, to Woodland Station this year. Unfortunately, we didn't know what the weather was gonna do for us, and we got stuck in the mud, literally. Literally. And I came to the city with a very short few days prior to the event, and I cannot say, yes I can, I can say that everybody involved with this, getting this event re-permitted and moved, then over backwards to make this thing happen. If it wasn't for them, I don't know what we would have done. We were stuck. And so, I got a few people to mention here tonight to say thank you, thank you, thank you, because you saved the event, and this was the biggest Vino and Notes in our history. Biggest yet. It was the most successful. And this new venue that we moved to turned out to be probably the best we've ever had yet. So, if I can, I'm gonna bribe, steal, beg on my knees, or if I can, to get this thing to stay where we're at this year. So, I got a few people to thank, if you don't mind, and I'm gonna start with the city of Woodland Park, the Downtown Development Authority, I'm gonna start with a young lady by the name of Lisa Parnell, Suzanne Brown, Bill Alsbach, Cindy Keaton, and the Parks and Recs folks, Cindy Morris, Suzanne Leclerc, David Butterby, Bruce Vanderpool, and all of his crew. The Woodland Park Police Department Chief, your folks starred that day. They kept their folks safe at that crosswalk at 24th Center. You saved our event.
Good deal.
Moment, folks. So, we love this town, we think this event is a benefit to the community, we want it to continue, and the only reason that it is continuing this year is because of the city of Woodland Park and what you did for us. We did this in two and a half days, folks. We had to move this event from an old venue that we had on a field to center and the Berks Arena, and you, we did it. We did it. And we were successful, and so I cannot thank you enough. That's why I'm here today, to say thank you. God bless you. And I have a few, just gifts, okay? If you don't mind, can I pass them out to y'all too? Because I passed them out to our city folks, but I wanna pass them out to you, is that okay?
Sure, yeah, we're great. Swag bags, we love it.
I got bags.
Carrying that around.
This is what I do, I pass out bags.
Better start over with that side right there, because you don't want...
It was important people.
I will. I gotta know.
There's no wine in there, though.
That's what somebody said to me earlier, there's no wine in it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Ben, thanks so much.
Isn't that nice?
And what is the date of the next event?
Written commendation on here, officer.
Next year?
Anybody else want a bag? I got some left.
Great.
First Saturday.
So the next one will be the first Saturday in August next year.
First Saturday in August next year, thank you.
All right. Ben, thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Cindy, do we have any other additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
We do not. We have some things on your table, and when we get to those items, I'll remind you that they're there.
Some changes, okay?
Changes to the agenda.
Item number six is the consent calendar, and that is to approve the minutes of the July 17th regular meeting, and to approve a construction contract with Complete Concrete LLC for the construction of curb, gutter, and sidewalk along the east side of West Street from Lake Avenue to Henrietta Avenue. Are there any questions on either item? Bob?
Just a quick one. The design for 7205, did that come out of the O&amp;M part of the budget for your office, or did it come out of the project cost?
Came out of the project costs, which is in the 410 fund.
And I did not mention before, that amount is $49,991 for that construction cost. Are there any other further questions of the staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar.
I would move approval of the consent calendar as presented.
Second?
Second.
Vote.
Thank you. Rovetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, on to unfinished business, which evidently we have none. Item number eight is ordinances on initial posting, and we have two this evening. The first one is ordinance number 1218, and that's posting for the rezoning of Tamarack Tech Pike, or Park Filling, number five, from heavy service commercial light industrial zone district to multifamily residential urban for Lot 6, and Lot 7, and multifamily residential suburban for Lot 5, and neighborhood commercial zone district for Lot 8, as requested by property owners of Mountain Star Investments LLC. Managing agent is Robert P. Young, and we will set the public hearing for September 4th. And Sally, over to you.
Thank you. This is a first reading of this ordinance, 1218, and on your tables, on your desks this evening, is a redlined copy of this ordinance. After our city attorney took a look at it, she felt we could strengthen the ordinance with just a few minor tweaks. The first tweak was to add a second whereas that acknowledges that we have limited water resources. However, we have the water resources at this point in time to be able to handle this change in rezoning, however, there is no guarantee on the long term to serve this property with increased densities. And then next, we added specifics about the public notice portion, and then the last whereas was also strengthened to acknowledge city councils and the planning commission's review of the case. Lastly, on the second page, section four was added to include the recitals as part of the findings for this project, or request. So, again, this is the first reading of the ordinance for the purpose of setting the public hearing for the rezoning request to September 4th. At that same time, there will be a subdivision modification of that area, so we will have a full presentation at that point.
Are there any questions for Sally or the staff right now? Yes, Ken?
Sally, if you can, if it's appropriate, just pondered what the initial response was from the public at Planning Commission.
At Planning Commission, we had seven individuals speak. They were all from the Tamarack Reserve neighborhood. One of the seven was supportive, the other six were not, and I will be including the minutes of that meeting in your packet in the next...
Sure you will, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Sally or staff? No more questions, I'll entertain a motion to consider ordinance 1218 on its initial posting.
Move to consider ordinance 1218 on official...
For a public hearing set for September 4th.
September 4th, yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Thank you. Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Rovetto?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item 8B is consider ordinance 1219 on initial posting to place question on the November 4th ballot, 2014, Teller County General Election Ballot, to approve a bond for the construction of an aquatic center and associated infrastructure, set the public hearing for August 21st, 2014, and for discussion of that initial posting, I'm gonna go to Mr. Butterby.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Harvey. Many times when we do an initial posting, we provide a more lengthy introduction so that we can generate questions from the community and from the council, so that we're better prepared for the public hearing, such is the case tonight. What we're bringing forward to you this evening is an ordinance on initial posting that would allow the city of Woodland Park to go into debt without an increase in taxes to build the long-desired aquatic center. For several decades, the community of Woodland Park has had the desire to have the swimming pool. What wasn't there was the ability to fund this. We worked very hard with many smart people to determine that we are at a point in our fiscal life as a city that we can build the aquatic center without raising taxes. So, the ordinance is on initial posting, and to help me with some of the components of this, I'd like to introduce to the council and to the community our financial advisor, Jim Meneer. Jim, if you'd come to the podium as well. And also Mario Trimble, who is from Kootak Rock. Mario is our bond counsel, so it takes a special skill to help us avoid the pitfalls of Tabor. And so, we've been using Kootak Rock for many, many years, and Jim as well, for his financial wisdom, coupled with our city attorney, Aaron Smith, so that we can craft the appropriate language to get it in front of the community, so that we can move forward with projects that are for the good of the community. So, this is an ordinance that would allow the city of Woodland Park to go into debt for an amount not to exceed $10,100,000 for the purpose of building the aquatic center and associated infrastructure, with a maximum repayment cost of not to exceed $15,400,000. I can tell you that between tonight and the final reading, those numbers may change as we fine-tune the debt service schedules. They could go up a little, they could go down a little, but for tonight's purposes, this is adequate. Jim, what would you like to add to the discussion? And of course, Mario will give you a chance to do that as well. They drove down from Denver tonight with the threat of having to stay in Woodland Park overnight.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here, first of all, and to help the city with this proposal. I'm Jim Meneer with First Southwest Company, and have acted as the city of Woodland Park's financial advisor on several previous transactions, and worked with a number of cities and counties throughout the state in that capacity. And I would simply add that we've been engaged with a dialogue with the city over the past several months about the affordability of this proposal, and the ability to proceed without a tax increase if the community supports it in the election. The numbers that are embedded in the proposal, the $10.1 million, is aligned with the expected spending for the project itself, along with some other city resources that are not part of the debt issue. We provide the number not to exceed a total repayment cost of $15,400,000 as a financial constraint. If we were in the market today, we think we would be able to get this done with a total repayment cost much closer to $14 million total. So, we don't want to, however, we wanna make sure we can get the financing done in a higher interest rate environment, if that's where we find ourselves in, at the time when we actually execute the financing. So, that number is intentionally higher than what we expect to have to operate with, and would accommodate an interest rate movement of 1% or 1 and 1/4% from today's environment. So, our objective is to get it done at the lowest possible cost. In the Tabor questions and the constraints that are embedded in the question, this would essentially limit the transaction on a not-to-exceed basis, but again, we would expect to accommodate or perform at a lower cost level. So, that's really all I feel like I need to contribute at this point. Happy to answer questions, I'll let Mr. Trimble speak to the legal concepts in the ordinance.
Mario, before you come up, did anyone have a question for Jim?
Well, I had a question, I don't know if it's appropriate at this point or at the next meeting. For the public to understand no taxes, that's great, and we're spending tax money, but no new taxes, where are we getting that?
So, the concept here is that the bonds will be repaid from the existing revenues and the existing budgetary resources of the city. So, while there's no new tax increase being requested to make the payment, the commitment of the city under this bond issue would be to dedicate existing revenues, and in an annual budgetary concept, you'd be committed to making this payment in a, you know, prior to other expenditures. So I think, just the, it is a trade-off, in the sense that committing to the debt service payment is, you know, will tie up city funds, and therefore, you know, has to be managed as a, you know, in the sense that other things may not be permitted or not be achieved one of the budgets once these fixed payments are committed to.
Okay, thank you. I think, and I don't wanna get into detail tonight, because I know that's not appropriate, but I know, David, you'll probably share with the public more in-depth detail. And, you know, we're paying off some things, we're saving here, how we're gonna do all that, we don't need to do that tonight. But it's very important to understand there's no new taxes, but we are spending tax dollars.
Correct.
That's a good point. Any other questions for Jim? Not Mario, come on up.
Good evening, members of the council, staff, community. You know, if you'll indulge me for a moment, the last time I stood here actually was getting right where he's standing, and a gentleman by the name of Bill was standing here, and we were asked to come up and give comment on another measure, and I recall a spirited debate going on among members of the council, and, you know, we dutifully stood here and sort of looked at our shoes while they tapped around us, and occasionally spoke up and answered questions. And at some point, I remember looking up into the corner, and I tapped Bill on his shoulder, and I pointed right over there, and we realized we were on camera. I'm more, I'm, you know...
And you look nice.
Prepared today. Thank you very much, thank you. The ordinance, as Mr. Butterby has described, calls for an election, sets the ballot title and text for an increase in the city debt up to the amount specified by Mr. Meneer, without an increase in taxes. To answer your question, sir, or to elaborate a little bit on your question, these are contemplated as revenue bonds, but they're a special type of revenue bond that would be payable from certain funds and the amounts in those funds. As it's currently constructed, those would be the general fund and the street fund. And there is a catch-all provision for any other legally available funds. In addition to the language calling for the debt question, there is also a secondary question of whether or not the city may collect, retain, and expend any proceeds or any earnings from the investment proceeds on such bonds. It's a common measure that is meant to deal with certain components of Tabor. It's called a de-bruising measure. You may recall, in 1994, there was a general de-bruising question that was passed. This is specific to this revenue stream, proceeds from the bonds, any investment on those proceeds. In addition to the question, the members of the city staff and officers of the city are authorized and directed to take any actions necessary or appropriate to coordinate with the county clerk and recorder, who will be the designated election official on that election. And finally, thanks to the dedicated efforts of our city attorney, of your city attorney, pardon me, my friend, your city attorney, Mr. Smith, we have added section four, which may not have been in your, in the version of this that was in your packets, but it should be on the table.
Yes.
Wonderful. And section four sets a deadline for calling, for filing, pardon me, a ballot title protest, and that deadline would be 5:00 PM on Thursday, August 4th. That is it. If there are any questions, I would be happy to...
Any questions for Mario on this particular bond, or on Tabor restrictions, or how Tabor works? Hearing none, thank you both. Is there any other discussion before we entertain a motion for initial posting? Noel?
I think Bob should do that.
All right. I will now entertain a motion to accept this ordinance on initial posting. If you could read the entire title?
A little anecdote, along the line of what he said the other night, I had a nightmare. When we came to this point, all the lights went out, and so I couldn't read the motion, and therefore, it didn't meet the Tabor dates. Okay? That's how totally obsessed I am with this. Thank you very much, Noel. I move to consider ordinance 1219 on initial posting to place a question on the November 4th, 2014, Teller County General Election Ballot, to approve a bond for the construction of an aquatic center and associated infrastructure, and set the public hearing for August 21st, 2014.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Vote, please.
Thank you. Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Rovetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we'll now move on to item number nine, public hearings, and we do have two. The first one is for ordinance number 1217, which would amend ordinance number 1204 seri- The first one is for ordinance number 1217, which would amend ordinance number 1204, series 214, excuse me, 2014, and the Woodland Park Municipal Traffic Code adopted therein by prohibiting certain activities in community parking lots and declaring such activities to be nuisances. And before David and Mr. Circa respond or address this one, I have to read into the record this. Council members use electronic devices to access the materials relevant to the public hearing before us. Be assured that this is a common practice of this city council, that these devices are not being used for texting, emailing, or other communications during public hearings, except for me. I always have hard copy. All right, David?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This evening before you counsel is the final document for the parking enforcement. It's the change to the existing code. We had the initial posting last and had some good discussion as it related to that. There's no changes, except for a signature block. And with that, I would request that after the public hearing, that you approve ordinance 1217.
And Rick, did you want to add anything at this point?
Nothing yet.
Nothing yet, okay. Questions from council for staff before we open to the public hearing?
I do have a clarification question.
Okay.
On 1008, 40, removal and disposal of vehicles, number three, I didn't understand that. Is three years old or older and?
What we found in the, and that's part of the existing ordinance now, and what this effectively tries to prevent is vehicles being in public places or even on private property that may be up on blocks that haven't been worked on for numerous years. They become a nuisance in the sense of a visual nuisance. So that's, that is incorporated into the existing ordinance. That's why it's not just three years old, it has to be an "and." So it's cumulative.
Okay.
And that's always been in existence?
Well, ever since the original ordinance was created.
The original ordinance, okay. Other questions for David? Bob?
On that one, there was a recent case where somebody was changing their, had just bought a car, and so therefore they didn't have a new license on the car because it was in process of getting bought. And all I'm saying is before they tow a car without a license plate on it, they at least try to ascertain from the owner whether they're in the process of getting a license plate.
Yeah, we aren't, we're very sympathetic to those kinds of things. We generally talk to people long before we would exercise that type of an action. Rick Circa, our code enforcement officer, is extremely tactful and extremely talented at talking to our residents and trying to come up with amicable agreements before we do anything like that at all.
And I found that to be true in the case I'm referencing, so.
Good.
I just didn't want this to change anything.
I don't believe it does.
Okay.
Any more?
Another question. Okay, so this kind of came up because of our, of a two-hour limit sign. How does this change that whole situation?
It allows for enforcement.
Just enforcement?
It allows for enforcement of any sign, not just the two-hour parking signs, but also the no parking on snow days, which we never had issues with. We also have, at least in one place that I can think of, a sign for compact cars only because it's a short parking stall and a GMC Dooley there impedes traffic moving through the parking lot. So this, all this does is it lets us enforce any signage that we have in the, in the public parking lots.
Okay, but it doesn't change putting the two-hour signs up?
No, it has no effect on that whatsoever.
Okay, that still goes back to petitioning and getting signatures from the landowners?
No, as I described before, the, I made an error when I was interpreting the easement agreements. I acknowledged that at an earlier meeting. The city has the authority by those easement agreements to place those types of signs.
Okay.
So the, whether those signs come down or remain up is something that we're still going to continue to look at and try to resolve with all the different property owners there. The approach that I took to install them, I think, was reasonable and was consistent with many parts or many parts of the intent, or the intent of many parts of the easement agreements. But I misinterpreted the two-thirds rule, so we will continue to look at that and try to get resolution amongst all the property owners there.
Thank you.
Are there any other staff members that would have comments on this particular change to the ordinance? We're going to open it now for public comment, and if you are coming up to comment on this particular ordinance, please come to the podium, state your name, and give us your address as well, and keep your comments succinct as possible. Do we have any public comment? Now close, public comment. Do we have any further questions before I entertain a motion or any statements?
I have a quick question maybe for Chief Larson. I should have asked this earlier. Do you see this causing any additional burden on the police department to enforce these signs? I assume it must.
It will, but I don't think it's anything that we can handle. We enforce other kinds of parking.
Okay.
What this does is allow us to have parking ordinances in community parking lots where the model traffic code generally only applies to streets and highways unless the council goes ahead and decides to do that. So we have other parking things to do, this will add a few more, but you know, I don't see it as a big deal.
Thank you.
I do have another question.
Sure.
So I get my car, I park in a two-hour and just happened to get one of my cars towed. How do I know who to contact when I get towed? Is there something that's going to be on the sign that says contact or this ordinance? By the, is that going to be on, is that go, how does that work?
I don't know the answer to that. I'll defer to the chief.
Chief?
Typically, what you're going to get is a parking ticket put on your vehicle rather than a, your car being towed right away.
Okay.
And when you come out, you'll see the parking ticket. It's going to be there for a while before anybody tows it.
So that comes down to the 72 hours I saw here?
And again, it was never our intent to do any towing. That's just a disservice.
If any vehicle left on this end of the community parking lot for 48 hours or more.
Forty-eight, okay. Forty-eight, two days, okay.
The other thing we normally try to do is get people to take their own vehicles away rather than having us remove them. So typically, when we find a vehicle that's abandoned on a street or a highway, we contact the person, tell them your car is there, take it away if we can find the owner. We can come up with the name of the registered owner, doesn't mean we can always find a way to get a hold of that person.
Okay.
Any guesstimate? Not asking for an exact number. I mean, how many times have we had to tow somebody in this situation in the city?
We don't keep a number on that.
I mean, is it one or two or 50?
I can, I can recall one, and it was in the park and ride facility above Joni's.
Yeah.
And it had been there a week or so, and after they'd run tags and tried to track people down, the, I think the person had acknowledged that they had abandoned it there or something like that, and we had to remove the car that way.
That's what I wanted to know, is just how big a problem this really was.
It's not going to be big.
It's not too often, maybe once a month, and then it'll get a little more frequent than what we have now. Now, we get a lot more calls on it than that as far as actually getting the point of having to tow it.
Yeah.
It's pretty uncommon.
And who tows it? Do we have a rotating list of tow companies or?
We only have one to work with.
Okay.
Fred's gone.
Billy, you look like you had something.
As I was going to say, in the last seven years, I've towed two cars for snow conditions.
Okay. Okay. Thanks. Any further questions? Comment?
Before the council takes a vote, I do want to acknowledge the work that Rick did to prepare the ordinance. He did quite a bit of research looking at other communities to see what was reasonable. And so that's why I asked him to be here this evening so that if you had specific questions on some of the details and the source of that information, he could provide that to you. Thanks, Rick.
Well, there are no questions for, oh, ma'am, did you want to come to the podium?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm sorry, public hearing was closed, but at the end of the council proceedings, if you'd like to come up and make a comment then, you can.
You can open it.
Thanks. All right. So at this point, if there are no further questions from council, I'll entertain a Don't all jump at one time.
Motion to approve, I guess.
1217.
1217. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Vote, please.
Thank you. Matthews?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Rovetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you.
And again, at the end of the council proceedings, we will entertain a public comment then as well. All right, we're on to item B, and that's the consider approval of a two-year extension for the Top of Paradise filing number one preliminary plat, which is also known as Paradise of Colorado to August 4th, 2016. Generally located northeast of Thunder Ridge Drive and Majestic Parkway as requested by Park State Bank and Trust. And Sally, over to you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. Counsel, I have a brief overview of the history associated with the Top of Paradise filing number one preliminary plat. Preliminary plats are valid for two years, and this preliminary plat was approved nine years ago and has had a series of extensions. So the request this evening is for this to be extended for an additional two years to 2016. So just to familiarize all of you with the Top of Paradise, it is a 200-acre area that is master planned. It is outlined on the zoning map in green and shows this area that was the final area to be developed as part of the Paradise Estates development. The area that is outlined in red on the zoning map is the 59 or so acres that was preliminary platted. And then there was a first filing that was completed and filing number one of half the lots, 29 lots. This is a exhibit of the master plan that has up to 190 lots that could potentially be developed. The master plan shows 175, and this master plan is still valid at this point until next year at this time. So the property owners, if they are interested in maintaining this master plan for the entire 200 acres, then they will come forward with a request for an extension. Master plans are valid for five years. Here is the preliminary plat that was approved in 2005, the first filing of which is outlined in blue, has had all of the roads and the infrastructure, water and sewer improvements completed, and a few homes have been developed in this area. And I don't believe, I did not see Chuck Mahoney here this evening, but Park State Bank does have control of these lots that have not been sold, as well as the balance 29 lots that are outlined in red that have yet to be developed and final platted. The bank intends to sell as many as they can in the first filing before they come around with a second filing. Should they come forward with a final plat, then that will automatically extend this preliminary plat for one year. When we look at requests for extensions to a final preliminary plat, then we don't have any specific criteria, but we do ask ourselves, were there any changes in our subdivision regulations that would cause this preliminary plat to be out of step with those changes? The only change that has occurred in our subdivision regulations since 2005 was that we added cluster housing to that regulation, and there aren't any proposals at this time for cluster development in this subdivision. However, that could happen and could easily apply to this area. And so with that, we find that this request is reasonable and that due to the economic downturn, it has been difficult to absorb these lots into the market, and the bank is requesting an extension to keep this preliminary plat valid for another two years. The Planning Commission did review this request on the 24th. We had no public comment associated with it, and they supported it unanimously. Happy to answer any questions.
Ken?
Despite all the things that you've told us, it sounds like there's been no issues, but I just wondered, is there any possible detriment to the city of Woodland Park with what they're requesting? It sounds like there isn't. I just want to hear you say that.
There is not. It is in compliance with our subdivision regulations, and it is part of an overall vision for the future of the development of this area.
Thank you.
They're very nice lots.
Yes, they are.
Any other questions for Sally or the staff?
Now, there's a, there's a water tower up there, correct?
Yes.
Okay, whose water tower is that?
That is the city's water tower. It's up at the end of this cul-de-sac here. That property has been conveyed to the city. That was done a couple of summers ago.
So the maintenance and everything on that city?
Correct. And I might add that all the easements and the infrastructure that serves this area that's outside this actual property has been accepted by the city and is in good working order.
Okay. Gary, did you have anything? No? Okay.
Thinking of the water main break we've had recently, where does the line go? Maybe this is a question for you, Ken. I mean, it doesn't go any, under any of those lots.
It goes up the street.
No, it's, it's in the right of way. For the majority of it, I couldn't tell you exactly if all of it is, but where the break was that was actually below, it was below the blue, wasn't actually in that line.
It was in this area. Thunder Ridge.
Right, down at the bottom of Thunder Ridge. Everything else up in there is in the right of way with my knowledge.
Okay. And what's the age of those, if I can ask roughly?
That I don't know.
The age of the lines?
The water lines and sewer lines that were put in the infrastructure, is that like five years old or 10 years or?
Significantly less than 10. I'm thinking four to five.
Okay. Good.
I'm sure you can understand why we're asking these questions.
Sure.
Are there any further questions for Sally? If not, we'll now open this to public comment. If anyone has public comment, you can come to the podium, please. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Unless there are further questions, I'll entertain a motion to accept this ordinance.
I'll do a motion to accept the ordinance. Top of Paradise filing number one preliminary plat, two-year extension.
Second.
Vote, please.
Thank you. Sawyer?
Yes.
Rovetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, we're on to, thanks Sally.
Thank you.
We're on to new business, and item 10A is an application for temporary use permit for Deborah Mareska for the Bike the Night event to start at 10:30 PM on August 22nd, 2014 at the Ute Pass Brewery. And Lisa, it's yours.
Good evening. I just wanted to preface that with both of the TUP event requests that I have this evening are related to the USA Pro Challenge event, and they are both have undergone, they're sanctioned events through the USA Pro Challenge State Level Committee and approved, and then also underwent our TUP local approval process through several agencies for review as well. So this first request, both of them are asking for extensions past 9:00 PM, which relate to section 18, 62B. And this first request is for our applicant, Deborah Mareska. It's for the Bike the Night event that will be held on August 22nd, and it's going to start and finish at the US, or at the Ute Pass Brewery, which is off of 209 East Midland Avenue. And they will start their event around 10:30 PM, and they will follow the route that is included with their application as part of your staff report explaining this. as part of your staff report explaining this particular event. And they'll take a ride onto Fairview and then finish that route. They'll also have a midpoint stop at Meadowwood Sports Complex. They have a facilities permit that was issued for that purpose, of sorts, an aid station, and they should return to Uptown Brewery between 11:30 and 12:30. And then around 1 o'clock at the senior center, there'll be an awards ceremony, breakfast-type of affair that'll last to approximately 1:00 AM. So specifically, we're requesting City Council's approval of extending, you know, this event after the hour of 9:00 PM. And this did undergo an agency review. Fires looked at it, police have looked at it, the State Patrol has reviewed it. Everyone's approved. No one's had any issues, particularly with the extension in time, having a nighttime event. And this did undergo the public notification process. There were letters sent out. There was a sign posted. We did not receive any feedback from any neighbors or adjacent property owners or public. So the applicant will be responsible for picking up trash at the Uptown Brewery, the start and end point, as well as the Meadowwood Complex as part of that. And so we're recommending approval from City Council after 9:00 PM to hold this event. And I would ask that Ms. Mareska would come join me, perhaps to answer any questions we may have specifically about this request, and to also just give you some more details on the event.
Please do, because I was going to ask David to give us a brief rundown of the day's event or the two days event, but if you could do that, it'd be great.
Actually, Deb's going to talk about one component of that, but Mike Perini is going to come up in part two of this discussion, and he's going to give you all kinds of great information.
Tell us what you want to tell us.
Well, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak and Mayor Pro Temp and Council. My name is Debbie Mareska. I live at 401 Pootsie in Florissant, Colorado. And Fountain Top Cycling Club has been in Woodland Park for a mere four years. I have not been around that long, but we have, we're based out of Woodland Park. We have 57 members this year, and our whole goal was to improve cycling, make cycling better in Teller County. We've hosted Experience Ride. First year, we had 40. Last, the year before that, we tripled our registration numbers, and this year we had a 27% increase. We have events like the Ride of Silence, which brings riders and cyclists from all over the state to come participate in a little five-mile ride. And we do the run-and-ride on Monday nights. We have the cruisers on Wednesdays to get families out riding for health reasons, sport, transportation, and we are a 501(c)(3) organization. And with Bike the Night Colorado Springs does 1,500 registered riders. So I thought, why can't we do something up here? So I'm kind of following the example of the other big clubs in the area, and I'm hoping to, you know, promote more and more events in Woodland Park. And so cycling will be on the lips of everyone here.
Deborah, thanks.
Any questions?
Ken?
How is this handled from an insurance standpoint if there happened to be a problem?
We are insured with League of American Bicycleists.
Okay.
And we tell them how many registered riders, and we pay per rider.
Great. Thank you.
Good question.
And can they provide the city with proof of insurance?
The Dissle insured?
Correct. Yes, and the high school. We're taking a little panther way, so we listed Woodland Park High School as insured.
Just have to look out for everything.
Got it all my i's and crashed all my t's. I think it will be just a blast for the kids in the community, the adults being a costume. It's one big party, so hopefully it will roll in going through the communities. I think the kids will realize, wow, this is really neat. I can ride from Billy's house to Johnny's house, and I didn't even get tired, and it'll be a family event. No children will be unsupervised, so I think it'll be a blast.
Thanks, Deborah. Any further questions for Lisa? If not, this is an administrative action, so we can simply entertain a motion to accept the administrative action to approve this application. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Cindy?
Thank you. Rovetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Deborah, thanks for your presentation, and now we're going to hear from Mike Perini. But the second item under new business is an application for a TUP, again, for the USA Pro Challenge Stage Five Start on August 22nd. Mike is requesting an extension of music at the Uptown Cultural Center Pavilion until 10:00 PM that evening. Whole hot time in the old town.
And I actually confuse things. Lisa's still going to do the presentation, but Mike's got a piece of it a bit later.
Please, Lisa.
Right, I'm just going to introduce him.
Okay.
But this request, this second request, is for another event after 9:00 PM, and it's again under that umbrella of the USA Pro Challenge. It's for an ancillary event, is what they call it. And it's for an event that'll go past, it'll go up to 10:00 o'clock at the Uptown Cultural Center Pavilion and the grassy green area. There will be concert music, and so again, we're asking for your approval, particularly because it goes past that 9:00 PM threshold found in Section 1862B. And again, staff has all reviewed this and approved, have not had any public comment, negative or positive either way, have posted the site, have sent out letters. And so at this point, I will introduce Mr. Mike Perini, who is our local organizing committee chairman for the USA Pro Challenge Stage Five Start. And he'll tell you a little bit more, answer any questions for me.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thanks, Lisa. Mike Perini, 1150 Spruce Ridge Lane, Woodland Park, Colorado. Mayor Pro Temp, City Council staff and members of the community. The City of Woodland Park will serve as the Stage Five Start venue for the USA Pro Challenge. I know you already know that, but what you might not know that this event is now America's number-one cycling race, and it is now the world's number-two cycling race. Tour de France is number-one if you follow cycling. This sporting activity is free, and the crowd size is up there with the Super Bowl, the Daytona 500, World Series, and the US Open. You have to pay to play there. This event is free. The setup team, we call them road warriors. They're going to build stages and prepare the venue for the crowds. They will arrive in Woodland Park on Thursday, August 21st. And through the night, while many of us, except probably myself and my team, while you all sleep, they will construct a village on the green at Midland Pavilion. Early Friday morning, as the sun rises over Pike's Peak, the racers, their coaches, their teams of doctors, and countless other key officials in several hundred vehicles, and the public, will drive up Highway 24 from Colorado Springs where Stage Four concluded. And they're going to join us up here in the city above the clouds to showcase our hospitality that only we know best as a mountain community. Your local organizing committee has been meeting for seven months at 7:30 in the morning to prepare for what is expected to be one of the largest public events ever in our city's history. A great deal of planning has gone into logistics, security, safety, hospitality, public communications, to include walking door-to-door to nearly 49 homes close by the start area, which will be right there at Midland Pavilion, the Cultural Center, and the library. And we have developed more than 20 ancillary events for young and old to enjoy. And I'd like to publicly acknowledge the LOC. Normally at 7:30, they're not a shy group, but tonight there are some here, and I'll just ask them to raise their hands, and some of you that sit on this side are there, but I've got some in the crowd. They have done a great job. And tonight, you have, for approval, two important activities that we know will entertain and be of value to our local citizens and our visitors, and we do appreciate your support. And yes, if you or someone you know still wants to volunteer, we could likely use your assistance. We are assembling a small army to help us with this great event. I'd like to thank the City Council and the City of Woodland Park staff for support and resources, and also our wonderful school district. The kids are going to be out of school to enjoy this prestigious global event with family and friends, and some of them have already discovered these bells, but I think they're down there, so. Be a lot of noise going on through the week. All in all, the efforts to undertake such a major event has demonstrated the great collaborative attitude across all sectors of our community, from young to our seniors, from businesses to nonprofits, from church groups. You heard about the senior breakfast, for example. Me being a senior, I didn't know we could stay up past 10, 11 o'clock, so that'll be interesting. I'm going to leave the latest rack card, which has the activities on it. We ran out of space because of all the things that we're planning, and I do ask that you share it, and we hope that you'll join us for Bike Week. It's 15 to 22 August. And then on Friday, the activities start at 9:00 AM, 9:00 AM, with our start village and our kid zone, and the cycling teams that you get close up and personal and get their autographs. The start ceremony begins at 10:20, and the race starts at 11:20 and goes from here up Highway 24 to Breckenridge. We have activities all day long, including a BMX demo team, bike decorating parade, youth expo, and a variety of music styles. I did ask for Neil Diamond, but Neil didn't come. But Doug Levy is here, and he's been working on our concert group, and we have country, classic rock, pop, and more. And if you've been to music, you know, you get going about eight, nine, 10, you know. So that's why we wanted to get that extra hour. And of course, you heard from Deborah that night bike ride to close out Stage Five. And all these events have the sanction of the UPCC, and we're excited. We're rookie city this year, and we're excited about being a part of it. That's my comments tonight. Do you have any questions?
Mike has, I don't know if I missed it or if it's coming up, a public meeting that will talk about highway closures and how we're going to deal with it the day of the race.
That is correct, and I think Debbie's going to give you the details on that, but it is coming up, yes.
Okay, great, thanks. Are there any more questions or comments for Mike? All right, if not, this, again, is administrative action. So do I have a motion to approve this particular temporary use permit for music until 10:00 PM?
I move to approve the application for a temporary use permit in the USA Pro Challenge Stage Five Start on August 22nd, 2014, as requested by Mike Perini for an extension of music at the Cultural Center Pavilion to 10:00 PM.
And a second?
Second.
Somebody did it. Vote, please.
Dave, Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Rovetto?
Uh-huh, yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Mayor Pro Temp, before you continue, I do want to thank Mike publicly for all the work he's done. For every other Thursday for about four months, the group met, and now it's meeting every Thursday. And talk about a room full of type-A personalities. It's pretty impressive. It's a who's-who of volunteer leaders within the community, and he's able to keep them under control and focused. And the level of detail that he's been able to cause them to think about. Today, they were, it was almost minute by minute. 11:30 on Friday morning, what's happening? Oh, you're doing that? You're using that back door? No, you can't, because somebody else has already claimed use of that back door. So it's that level of detail, and as we all know, a plan is only as good until it starts. And he's got contingency plans, and it's just, it's phenomenal to watch Mike in action, and also the dedication of a lot of the folks that are in this room and sitting up here at the dais to make sure that this event is one that folks will remember. So Mike, thank you for your leadership. We appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike. We'll move on now to 11, item 11, which is public comment on items that were not on the agenda. And Deb, I'm going to ask you to come up, but was there any, ma'am, did you want to come up now and make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Please, come on up and state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Michelle Thomas. I live at 1702 Columbine Village Drive here in Woodland Park, and that's up off of Highway 67. With regard to the new ordinance for the parking, I do have a business inside of a business that is there. And it is the parking lot that I'm talking about that is at 110 West Midland Avenue, behind the building east and where Curbs is. I do have clients that do park in there, as everybody knows, and especially every female that has color put in her hair and maybe a pedicure or something at that time. Our services do exceed two hours. Now, with that being said, a lot of times, there are no places to park between our business, the business next to us, and the business that's kind of catty-cornered by us. We have approximately 10 students, so there's 10 cars. There are, we'll say, 10 clients for those students, not all the time, but there are. There's clients for me and another coworker in there. So you're looking at a large number of cars. That's just for one business. Then you have the other business that has their cars, and I think Bliss has at least four employees that are in there and is booth renters. Now, we also have a lot of elderly people that do come to our salon, because especially with it being a school, it's cheaper and better for their fixed incomes. And again, the only place to park is there. We have 17 parking spaces in two different parking lots. That's combined. There are 28 in the back where the two-hour parking signs are. We have, like I said and I stated, with all the employees, the clients coming through, and the business behind us where the two-hour is, is only open part-time with a one employee in there. With that being said, with my clients to be ticketed, if they're back there in that two-hour parking area, will somebody come to find out if they're a customer? And will they pay attention as to the things that are coming to that? That's what I need to know, because as again, with having your hair colored and how many processes and different things, I do have some elderly people that are in there for an hour and a half to... There's times that they're in there for four and a half, six hours. So with that, you know, we only have 17 parking spaces for three businesses.
Chief, I think Chief Larson had already commented that they make every effort to find the owner of cars that may be parked in excess of the two-hour limit, and that we've only had one or two cars towed for any reason in the last several years. So I think that that effort would be made. I'm speaking from what I understand. Chief, if you want to respond to that.
Situation so far, we haven't had the ability to tow cars within that lot, so it's really not come up very much. But we have had 40 different reasons that you can tow a car, because we have state traffic law, the Colorado Motor Traffic Code. And now these specific things here are preferences not to tow cars. We are going to tow a car based on a two-hour limit, and we can't find one. We still have to establish when that two-hour time period began, and we prefer to use police witnesses rather than other witnesses. The reason for that, if it does go before, we have to be able to establish that we promptly tow the vehicle. So we start out by trying to find people. Now, I can't guarantee that we're going to canvass all the businesses and find out where the people are. It's really going to depend on how congested the parking lot is, what calls are going on, how much time the officer has. We may simply put a parking ticket on it to start the two hours to show that at this point we have a complaint that it was there, or we could put a notice on it that says that you have to remove it within two hours. It's going to be a matter for the officer to figure out. It isn't going to be a matter of policy, because the officer may have a witness that looks pretty solid that it's been there. We may have some other reason to know why it's been there. It may have driven through there earlier on some other business. But these are discretionary things for officers. I can't make you a promise, though, that we're going to be able to accommodate a client who's there over two hours if the council approves his ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not our intent to, it's not our intent to tow. It's not our intent to ticket. You know, the whole two-hour parking issue... You know, the whole two-hour parking issue was really very separate from the ordinance process. The ordinance process would apply to any signage. The two-hour absolutely was the catalyst that caused us to take a look at the fact that we didn't have the ability to do those enforcements. It's my hope that after some very short period of time, we have some resolution as it relates to the two-hour parking situation. This is a completely different animal than the ordinance that you just passed. Again, it's not our intent to harass business owners or property owners or customers or clients. The intent of the two-hour parking was to ensure that that public parking was available for as many people as possible for as long as possible. You know, I don't want necessarily to cause someone who's visiting our community to have to come back to their car and move it after two hours. That's not the intent. When the two-hour parking signs went up, I felt I was under an obligation to fulfill the easement agreements that were signed many years ago. I've acknowledged publicly and privately in many different scenarios that I misrepresented or misinterpreted that easement agreement. So we're going to go through the process of trying to get those signs gone or get them modified or come up with another solution. But I have absolutely no desire to ticket an elderly client of yours who's having her hair done, and it takes four, six hours. The idea was to preserve as much of the public parking as we could for all the customers that come to that entire area, not necessarily employees. Many of the businesses in the area have asked me to get involved with causing employees to park someplace else, so that they can save those prime parking spaces for customers and our visitors, and that was the intent of those. So what I will tell you is that if you have a customer that's there being serviced by your establishment, it's not our intent to ticket them. As the chief said, I can't promise you that that won't happen, but that's not our intent. You know, we will pass the word down to our officers. We will do everything we can do to make sure that customers who are there, that's not our issue. Our issue is continued consumption of public parking places that are denying other customers from enjoying that close-in parking opportunity to many of the other businesses. But like the chief, I'm not going to make you a promise that I can't absolutely ensure that I can keep, but that's our intent, is not to bother your clients.
Okay.
Thank you.
Because I just want to make sure that my clients are happy, and that's what my business thrives on, and I do not want my clients not wanting to come in because we have somebody that is sitting there being the parking police and blowing up the phones, well, this one's been here, it'll be two hours by the time you get here. It's been an hour and 55 minutes, and...
As the chief mentioned, he really relies on his officers to be the witnesses, and so not necessarily other people. You know, there's other ways to obtain evidence, that's for sure, but again, it's not our intent to harass anyone who's receiving services in any of the businesses along there.
I think, your point's been taken, but thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
David, thanks for that. That was, gave clarification for all of us. All right, Deb Miller, come on up.
Good evening, Deb Miller with Greater Woodland Park Chamber of Commerce. I do want to just share with you Mayor Protim and Councilman just a bit about Mr. Perini and the fact that when we started seven months ago, he informed us he was the pilot of the plane, and that we would be getting on the plane with him. I'm not sure exactly when we loaded, but we are at high altitude now, and we're hoping in the next two weeks we land safely with Mike guiding us in. And so as a part of that, one of the things the chamber wanted to do is hold a town hall informational meeting, and this is going to be held on Monday night, August 18. It will be at the Cultural Center. It will start at 6:30. Our hope is to be out within an hour. What we want to do in that informational meeting, Mike Perini, our chairman, Locke Pierce, our technical director, and Chief Larson will be with us that night. We want to dispel any rumors, such as, for instance, we heard the highway was going to close at Colorado Springs. These are rumors that are really beginning to bubble to the top about how long the highway will be closed, where will it be closed at, what will happen, when will the race start, all of these things. I know Mike isn't going to like this comment too well, but there are people out there that are going to go about their daily life that day and might not come to the race or might have other things to do. We also want to help our citizens, so that they are affected at a minimal cost, such as if they get up, we are still having farmer's market that morning, but they'll not be able to park where they typically go to park. So parking will be talked about that night, all of those things. So we have sent out to all the nonprofits, all the businesses, we've asked people to talk to their friends, their neighbors. So this is really for the citizens of Woodland Park to come to this meeting, learn about what the facts are, and so after Monday night, they can go share with their neighbors about the facts of the impact, how this will happen, how it will go. It's also my understanding from Mike that we're the only community that is doing something like this. Again, it's just a way to minimize any kind of negative impact for our citizenry here, so, if you have any questions. Ken?
Heard a lot of numbers thrown out there in terms of eight or 10,000 people coming to this event. I guess I'm surprised that we're still having the farmer's market, which my wife loves to go to every week, but where are they all going to go? I'm sure you'll talk about this at that meeting, but I just thought publicly, maybe we need to address that. I mean, a lot of people go to that market.
And they do, and remember, the market starts at 7:00 a.m. in the morning. Our Start Village won't open till 9:00. They are addressing that through a technical effort, the parking, all of that will be addressed. There will be shuttle buses, there's parking areas for people to come into town.
Okay. And we'll have the signs lit up, tell them where to go park and shuttle, like we usually do.
Let me interject real quick. You may recall two years ago, when we had the sprint through town, it was also on a Friday morning, we had farmer's market, and they cohabitated very nicely together, and we estimated about 5,500 folks lining the highway. We don't really know what the numbers could be.
Yeah.
We hope it will be eight to 10,000, or 12, or 15. It's going to be busy, and the technical committee has designated a pass system for multiple parking lots. Teams are going to be in certain areas. There are maps that have been created, they're on our website now, they've been published, they've been in the paper, they're all over the place. And so folks, just go to our website, they can go to Stage 5 Start and find all that information. But again, a lot of folks don't have computers, so we're going to invite them to come to that Monday night meeting. We're going to try to see if we can stream it live, just in case folks can't attend. We've got the technology, we just need to test it and check it and see if we can do that as well.
The more we can get the word out about that, the better for everybody.
Absolutely.
Pat Hill has done an article for us already. We, Mike and I will be working on frequently asked questions, that we will post them both on the city and the chamber site. The maps are on the chamber site as well. We have information for our visitors coming in as well, and you're exactly right. That's, my own personal goal is that we don't have someone say to us, I didn't know this was going to be here.
Yeah.
So this is what we hope to do, to be able to inform everyone, so please let your neighbors, we're dependent upon you all as well, to let everyone know to come to that meeting.
Great.
And the time again?
6:30, Monday night on the 18th. Thank you.
Thanks, Deb. All right, any other public comment? Yes, Steve, come on up.
Good evening, I'm Steve Jarvis Law. I live at 610 Sun Valley Drive here in Woodland Park. I wanted to make a comment about the Woodland Aquatic Project. Lest anyone not realize it, the vote that all of you took about an hour ago was truly historic. It's one of the few times over the last forty decades that this organization has voted favorably to put a measure on the ballot so that we could have a swimming pool complex here in Woodland Park. It has taken the current Woodland Aquatic Project Board two and a half years to help get us to this point, and as those of you who've been on the council and the city staff for any length of time know, it hasn't always been fun, and it hasn't always been easy. But here we are, August 7, 2014, a unanimous vote by the council to put this measure on for ballot in front of the citizenry on November 4. I am, I want to thank a number of people just to have helped us get this far. First and foremost, I want to thank David Butterby and his staff for an extraordinary job in putting together a packet that was presented at the July 31st special council meeting that demonstrated to the council that this can happen, this is financially feasible, we can get this done, and in the hopes, of course, that the taxpayers on November 4th will agree. So David, thank you, just an extraordinary job, your usual attention to detail, thoroughness with all the facts and figures, and your experts to help convince us that this is doable, and it's an idea whose time has come. But I also need to thank the leadership of the Woodland Aquatic Project Board, Jerry Simon and Bob Carlson, for their persistence, their quiet advocacy. Not all of us know how to advocate quite so subtly as they did, and Bob Carlson in particular for his extraordinary perseverance and subject matter knowledge to be able to convince the board members and the council and the city manager and staff as well that this is doable. So I'm confident that in two weeks, based on the current vote of the council, that this measure will be approved for final resolution and that the matter will be put before the citizens to vote. I realize there's going to be a lot of activity that's going to have to occur between then and November 4, but the Aquatic Project Board is determined to help educate the public as to why this is a good idea, and any support that the staff and the mayor council can provide would also help, assuming you support it, of course, would help put this over the edge and into a successful initiative. So thank all of you for your support.
Steve, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Steve, I would just like, I think you need to take every opportunity, if we're going to be successful in this, to emphasize that, yes, there's public tax dollars being spent to do it, but no new taxes unlike in the previous attempts. I just can't emphasize that enough. We have to make sure people understand that.
You're right.
If they're not taking the local paper, if they're not doing something else, they'll just see something about taxes and say, no. You know, I just think it's imperative, as we said earlier, talk to your neighbors, your friends, make sure they understand that.
Right, you're absolutely right, Ken. Point well taken, and we will do that.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you again.
Does anyone else want to come up and thank anyone publicly? If not, we'll go on to the mayor's report, and it's really just a list of some of the events that are coming up, and we've got some great events coming up. Always the farmer's market on Friday morning, I always send my husband down. Saturday on August 9 is the 25th Anniversary Mayor's Cup Run. It's a 5K and a 10K. Noel, you're going to participate, aren't you?
I'm going to.
Oh, good. I will be participating, but I don't run, I don't jog. My husband and I are going to waddle the 5K, and we'll see you hopefully at the end when you finish the 10K. On Saturday, and I think we can still take registrations for that, correct?
Absolutely, yeah, five minutes before it starts.
Great. That will be a great time for all. Saturday, August 9, Woodland Music Series Shades of Blue at the Midland Pavilion, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and that is free. On Saturday, a history park tour, which is always fun, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and again, that's free. I think we have some folks here that will participate that, in that as dozens walking the folks through the tour there. So if you've got company in town, that's a great place to take them. Saturday on August 9, the Woodland Parks Arts Alliance Presentation, Manitou Chamber Music Festival at Highview Baptist Church. That does have a fee, but I'm sure it's worth it. Saturday, August 9, Quilters Above the Clouds presents quilts in the Aspens, and that will be at the middle school. Oh, there is a ton of stuff going on that day. 9:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. That's got a $2 entrance fee, but I'm sure that's going for a good cause. Tuesday, August 12, special meeting for city council, and that is to select our new mayor in council chambers. That'll be at 7:00 p.m. We now have five applicants for position of mayor. Any comments on that one? We'll talk about how that will proceed on the 12th. Wednesday, August 13, Touch a Truck, 10:00 a.m. to noon, and that's at the Meadowwood Sports Complex, and I assume it is exactly what it says. You get to go touch some city trucks and equipment, and is anything coming up from Fort Carson? Is this all stuff?
I'm not sure if they typically bring something up, but there's county vehicles, state vehicles, city vehicles, there's all kinds of horns, hawking, and sirens going. It's wonderful.
And if you have grandkids in town, which I did last week, that's a good way to get a little bit of energy out of them. Thursday, August 14, and Sunday, August 17, through Sunday, August 17, is the Woodland Park Rock Gym and Jewelry Show. That's on the Saddle Club grounds across from the Swish Deli, and that's free, and that is a great place to go get Christmas gifts, hint, hint. Friday, August 15, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., we have our third Friday Art Walk downtown. And finally, if we haven't told you enough tonight, August 22, which is a Friday, the USA Pro Challenge Cycling Event will be all day, although the race begins at 11:20 a.m. at the Midland Pavilion, and I have nothing more. Gary, do you have anything?
Always do, don't I?
Well, I just want people to know, I usually do this about once a year, but I want you to know that I've got a bunch of international exchange students here this year. It's kind of a record for Woodland Park High School. We got seven. They're coming from South Korea, Japan, Norway, Spain, Germany, Sweden, Kazakhstan. I just mention this because if you see these people in the street, welcome them and talk to them, because that's why they're here, we're looking for an exchange between these countries and our little community here. Woodland Park is starting to get a Woodland International flavor, because we've had international exchange students here in the past, and they always say good things about Woodland Park when they go back to their own countries. So there are people internationally that know what Woodland Park is and the exceptional nature of this particular little community. So if you see them out there, you know, welcome them and interface with them. I know your kids will interface with you. Your kids always tend to interface with these kids, and they become close friends. So it's kind of an unusual year, because we do have a record number.
And they're all going to Woodland Park School?
Yeah, they all go to Woodland Park, yeah.
And you've got two of them, correct?
Well, I got two, yeah, I always have two.
Thanks, Gary. Bob? Ken? Noel? Okay, thanks. City attorney?
I have one brief report, and that is really to give the council just a preview of some advice that I'll be providing you and writing, and that has to do with the restrictions on what the city can do, what the staff can do with respect to supporting the ordinance 1217 and the vote on the...
Bond issue.
...question, the bond issue. When the ordinance is passed on second reading, that means that the ballot title will have been set, and that triggers certain restrictions under what's known as the Colorado Fair Campaign Practices Act. And so it is after that date, the city cannot, city staff cannot participate in officially a city staff using any city funds or any city staff time to support or campaign for or urge passage of that ordinance or that ballot question. Same with council. Council can't as a body do anything official or public or spend any city money to do that, but individual city council members can certainly go out and campaign on their own as individual city council members, individual citizens, and there is absolutely nothing that stops the members of city council from knocking on doors and campaigning as much as they want. But just to be clear, you know, city staff and the city cannot expend time, resources, or money in support of that measure after it is passed on second reading.
Thanks, Karen. City manager?
We have three listed this evening and one unlisted, and I'm going to start with that. Despite the lengthy list of events, the author of that, me, left one critical one off, and the chief's going to mention that one.
August 16, at 10:30 in the morning, the annual POW MIA Recognition Ride goes from Woodland Park to Purple Creek. Registration starts at 7:30 in the morning at our high school. At 10:30, the bikes go out onto the highway. It typically takes between 20 and 30 minutes, and the highway is closed until the last bike comes out or we decide to call it. And the highway is closed until the last bike comes out or we decide to call it typically. State Patrol Commander and I will shut it off at 30 minutes.
Okay.
Generally get out of the bus.
I've been here for those.
Bikes ride all the way to Purple Creek. After that, there's a salute to Veterans Rally in Purple Creek.
Great.
Thanks, Chief. Brian?
Mayor Protem, Harvey, and Council, several issues. We had talked about the Main Street application, and as a process, we went, as Councilman Braveto had mentioned, we went as a team, Gary Led, the team with Vera Egbert, Gary Crane, myself, and we met with Reeves Brown, who's the Director of DOLA. One of the things I think we can underestimate is the importance of what Main Street does for the community in terms of recognition. I think it's already had benefits, i.e. the Community Development Block grant that we received for approximately $436,000 for the Pike's Peak Regional Hospital Waterline Loop. We are recognized as a community that proverbially has their act together, and it really does map. I spend quite a bit of time with Department of Local and Fair staff, they know who we are, they know what we're doing. Pro Challenge is one good example. All these things really resonate in the community of the state in terms of what we do, including the Office of Economic Development and International Trade. We're gonna use that to leverage opportunity in one particular area, Woodland Station. I'm currently working with, again, I think you're familiar with the Corzecu's Family Entertainment. They are making significant progress relative to their loan with Canyon National Bank. We're working with Doug Dollar, who's the Executive Director of the Southern Colorado Economic Development District. He's helping us through a hybrid SBA 504 USDA loan product because of our population base. We're eligible for that loan. You would not be able to receive that USDA component in Colorado Springs, for example. So we're taking advantage of that program. We will use that in terms of other applications. I mentioned DOLA. Our intent is to create as much of Woodland Station in a pad-ready environment as we can to save dollars for those that come into our development partners. So having said that, we're excited about the process. I had mentioned before, 2014 is unfolding as the year of design and acquisition with anticipation for heavy construction on a number of fronts in 2015, including that 85-bed hospital at the Waterline Loop, nursing facility that the Waterline Loop will accommodate. I think many of you are familiar with Phase Two of the Caris Bible College Tractor Supply will be finishing up this year. We'll have development activity on Lot Two in Woodland Station, hopefully the Family Entertainment, and keep our fingers crossed, Steve, the Aquatic Center under construction in 2015 as well. So a lot of activity on the horizon relative to brick and mortar, and that's what I get real excited about. So also, just a couple of other notes, you've noticed Tractor Supply has been coming along. They're actually stocking the facility, we're in conversation with their management team, they've done hiring. I talked with Ray Hicks, the developer, today. The weather, like in a lot of development, has slowed them down slightly. They hope to have an opening in the early part of September. So that's an ongoing effort. You'll see continued cleanup on the site, but it's looking great, design standards have had an impact, I think all will agree on that building. Some of the concerns about a big building, 26,000 square feet, have been alleviated by that process. So we're excited about that. Also, many of you know Mark Rebault with Country Lodge, he came before our DDA this past week with an announcement that he would like to pursue another hotel. He bought the whole, so to speak, right in front. I think many of you know Skip Howson on that, he did purchase that. And he's in the process of going through his due diligence. We met with his feasibility individual, a group out of Florida that's doing a feasibility study, and will really look at what types of hotel may fit that particular site. On average, I think we're looking at an 80-bed facility. But Mark wanted to get to the DDA, expressed his interest not only in that site, but a possible TIF agreement down the road. So we're excited about that. I think the future is bright relative to that particular type of project. I think in some capacity, we'll see that probably starting under construction within the next two years. What other questions or comments can I address with Council this evening?
My wife and I had the opportunity to go to Telluride last few days ago, and we drove through Montrose, Gunnison, Montrose, Ridgway, Yure, and then we went over to Telluride. And I just made it, I looked around when I drove into each city and I counted the lodging, and each city just had a minimum of 10 lodging. And Gunnison's not a very big town either. And right when you drive in, there was just lodging on both sides. And we drive into Woodland Park and we have nothing. I mean, we have one, but are we gonna focus on that in the next few years to get some more lodging here?
Well, you know what, really what happens is the market comes to you. I always say this to people that ask questions about Woodland Park, you can't force the market. What I have noticed in the last 90 days is all of a sudden we have a significant interest in lodging. And it's by people who I say that they're the real deal, they've been in the business. There's three or four families in the Front Range that do hotel business, they've all visited Woodland Park, we've had meetings, we've given the tour. The question is, we, some of you may remember during the, some of the, I'll mention Joe Napoleon when he was the DDA Director, had done a back-of-the-ensemble market study and were looking at perhaps needing 120 rooms. That feasibility study never was official, but those studies are being done now because lending institutions are gonna require that. We'll have a better handle on how many units Woodland Park can support. One of the things you see in all of those communities, they're destination communities. We've always had this sort of struggle, are we a destination, will we become a destination? One thing that's apparent right now, and we're feeling it, we've done some back-of-the-ensemble calculations, we estimate by some of our just data, and some of it is reverse address changes to the post office because we know people come back to Woodland Park, we estimate that somewhere between 1,000 and 1,500 people have come and stayed in Woodland Park somewhere between that July 4th date and maybe Labor Day. You can feel it. I think people, business owners, traffic, et cetera. We know that people are coming to Woodland Park. It's that shoulder season that has, that people in the industry will look back and say, "Well, can we get it supported throughout the entire year?" The big change that's happened here in the last year is Caris Bible College. We know that they're in their second phase, they're gonna build a 2,500-seat auditorium. We know they're gonna have monthly conferences. What kind of impact will that have? What kind of requirements will that have? There's a healing conference, Deb, I think Deb mentioned in a meeting, 1,700. We had a summer Bible camp that had about that number. We know we can't accommodate anywhere near those folks, they're staying in Colorado Springs. So as the data gets better, I think we'll see more opportunity for more lodging in Woodland Park, and I think a lot of it will have to do with a growing hospital. We know there's 1,000 employees at the Gold Mine on the West Side, we know there's interaction in the West Side of the county. Gaming is what it is, because we always get the question, "What about corporate?" Because we know there's a balance between tourism and corporate economy. So, but with Caris, that's created an interesting dynamic, and people, guys in the business know it, and so they're paying attention. There's a limited number of sites that will accommodate something like this, and we've got them pegged. We show them to those individuals, of course, I'm biased to Woodland Station, but we show them everything. And it's about four, five, six sites that could accommodate what we generally will see is about a three-story facility that would probably be about 80 beds. And somebody will get there initially, the question is, that second one, will the demographic support it? So we are, it's a primary pursuit, not only at the DDA level, but within the community. Those who are in the business are very sensitive to it.
Because maybe we're not a destination community because we don't have lodging?
Well, you know, it's a good, it's a good point.
So can your focus be for the next year to really look for lodging more than box stores?
Well, let me make no mistake, it is a focus. But I, you know, I spend a lot of time with lenders who look at this, and there's a systematic approach. We absolutely would love to have more lodging. There's a, but when it comes to, and most of all these guys are looking for DDA property, they know we have DDA, we have a TIF increment that helps them in the financing of these types of projects. The finance guys already know, how many can you support? And as fast as we went into the recession and the whole industry shut down, we're starting to come out of it, but they're very cautious. So we, make no mistake, it is an emphasis. You know, the top three to five things that we're looking at, lodging is one of them. I mean, retail is always gonna be an important factor for us, that mixed-use residential is in there because, you know, the old adage, retail follows rooftops, I mean, that absolutely applies. So it is definitely something that we focus on and we spend a lot of time with. And those people come to us and we have a lot of dialogue. One of the statistics that's interesting is that throughout the state, we're, there's an estimate that our tourism this year is up about 20%. So it's being felt throughout the Front Range, to the Western Slope, so. And I'd be glad to give you a tour of the sites, too, sometime, because I do it on a regular basis.
Yeah, I'd like to do that, too.
Any other questions from Council?
Brian, thanks for the presentation and thanks for what you do every day.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Council may recall that at our last council meeting, I introduced you to our new Finance Director. He's now been on the job seven days, and he's got a report to give you. Wally, come on up.
Mayor Protem, you have in your packets the 2015 budget calendar. It essentially follows the same format as prior years, so I will go through it line by line. There are two items on there I do want to mention tonight, and that is the fourth line down the council work session if needed. We put that in there, the date hasn't been determined, but if that's needed, we will decide on a date at that time. And the very last item there, December 18th, we've made that date available to finalize and approve the budget appropriation ordinance if that's needed. However, I'm sure we are all hoping that December 4th will take care of that item so we can enjoy a longer Christmas break. Are there any questions on the schedule?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wally. The last thing on my reports had to do with a reminder to the council and the community of the August 12th Special Meeting to appoint our next mayor. As you mentioned earlier, we do have five applicants for those, Gary Braveto, Phil Mella, Neil Levy, Gretchen Bundy-Ladowitz, and Michael Maddox. That is a public meeting, and it will begin at 7 o'clock right here in council chambers. At the beginning of the meeting, we will review and make some decisions. You'll make some decisions on the process that you're going to take as it relates to that election amongst yourselves. Each of the candidates will have an opportunity to talk to you about them, what they think their qualifications are, and then have a chance to answer any questions that you may have. That's all we have this evening unless you have questions for me.
We have no correspondence to read into the record. That being the case, we will now adjourn this regular meeting at 20 till 9:00.